All right, guys. Good evening, everybody. I am going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 4th to order at 6:01 PM. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, before we get started, we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Please check our website for any additional events or notices, again, at www.kingstonma.gov. We have our special town election coming up on Saturday, November 15th. The ballot question is, shall the town of Kingston be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund a partial roof replacement for the Kingston Elementary School? So this was the, it was an article on the warrant for our special town meeting that did pass. So it moved from town meeting to the ballot so that they can borrow. And again, I just want to be clear, we are getting some funding from MSBA. The way it's worded, we had to, we had to ask for the entire amount, but we will be getting MSBA funding for this project. If we don't, then we're not moving forward because we would cut that project down if we were paying for it 100%.
Theoretically, it's 50-52%, something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Am I missing anything on that, on the ballot question? Is there anything else we should say?
No, you're right. If you're required, no, not just here in Kingston, no matter, they always make you do the full amount. In case things change, oh, sorry, sorry. They always make you do the full amount in case things change so that if it became that they only got to put in 49%, you don't have to keep going back to town meetings and things.
Okay, that makes sense. Before we get started, any other announcements from anyone?
Just thanking everyone for coming to special town meeting. All articles but one passed, so just appreciate everyone's time.
And we were able to start on time, unlike our regular annual town meeting.
Yeah, what was it, 10 articles in 90 minutes?
Yeah, it was very good. All right, before we get started, we do have open forum. If anybody would like to speak, just raise your hand. Go ahead.
Good evening, Sarah Lancing, 61 Hollins Lane, Veterans Agent for the Town. Next week is Veterans Day on Tuesday, November 11th. And I just wanted to let everybody know that there is going to be a short ceremony out front at 10:30, open to all residents and the public. And then there's a luncheon over at the Council on Aging at 11, which is limited to veterans and seats only 100. We're almost maxed out on the RSVPs for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online with their hand up? I can't see. Okay. All right, moving on. Our first appointment is a discussion of four-day work week continuing at the Townhouse. So back in February, our board approved a four-day work week for a six-month trial period from July 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025 for the Townhouse. So we're meeting tonight to discuss continuing the current schedule beyond the December 31st, 2025. So again, in our handout here, we have the previous five-day schedule. Where basically on Fridays, we're open from 8 to 11:30 PM. Back in July, we extended our normal hours, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 8 to 4:30 to 8 to 5 PM. And then on Tuesdays, it was 8 to 6 PM. Total hours worked are the same. We just haven't been open on Fridays. And just as one person speaking here, I haven't received any feedback, good or bad, from anybody. Well, I shouldn't say I haven't heard any good feedback. I mean, I've heard feedback that people like it, you know, people who are working totally get that. And just a reminder, Keith, when he presented this to the board, one of the issues was to help recruit and retain staff. You know, that this was a tool that would help us in our recruiting. And certainly, we're seeing that, you know, when we're talking to potential TA candidates as well. So, any discussion, any comments?
The only question folks have come to me with is about posting agendas. So if we can figure out a way so that the committees and boards can post agendas without needing to do that a day earlier, that would be great. So that was really the only feedback I heard. I know there is not really a cost savings, but I do know that folks who work in the building have expressed that they would like to keep it this way.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we started the discussion off with it's a great recruitment tool. My only thought, and it might be just my thought, is we're so close to hiring a new TA. Do we wait and give it another few months and have the new TA onboard to see how they appreciate that or can oversee it or give us more insight? That's my only thought. I think it's great. I just wonder if we wait until we get someone. And I feel like we're making a decision without the person here that's going to oversee it. I don't know, just a thought.
As you all know, I wasn't here when the decision was made to have this trial period. And my general feeling is that I'm not enthusiastic about telling townsfolk that, you know, we need possibly a Proposition 2 and 1/2, we need more money, we need, we have budget problems. Oh, and by the way, we're closed on Fridays. What I would be more in support of is on an ongoing basis, I see it as reasonable to have the summer hours so that perhaps for June, July, August, that it would always be this way. But my feeling is that I'm not in favor of it on an ongoing basis 12 months out of the year.
It's negotiated, right? Is this a negotiated conversation?
It was, I think it was a negotiated for the time, for the six-month period.
Right.
For me personally, you know, I, the reason I was hesitant in the beginning was just worried about permits and other things, people coming in to do town business. But I literally have not had a, heard a single complaint about, about any of this.
No, I have not either.
The only other thing I would say is, as, you know, when I was working for the federal government, they had various work schedules that you could do, the 5, 4, 9s, you'd do five, four nine-hour days and then a 10-hour day and then you'd have every other Friday off kind of thing. And then they had the 4-10s, they had different work schedules for different people and you had to get permission.
You go?
Right.
All right, guys. Good evening, everybody. I am going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 4th to order at 6:01 PM. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the government, for assistance, one nation, under God, in the full, complete, change of status. For all.
All right, before we get started, we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Please check our website for any additional events or notices, again, at www.kingstonma.gov. We have our special town election coming up on Saturday, November 15th. The ballot question is, shall the town of Kingston be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund a partial roof replacement for the Kingston Elementary School? So this was the, it was an article on the warrant for our special town meeting that did pass, so it moved from town meeting to the ballot so that they can borrow. And again, I just want to be clear, we are getting some funding from MSBA. The way it's worded, we had to, we had to ask for the entire amount, but we will be getting MSBA funding for this project. If we don't, then we're not moving forward, because we would cut that project down if we were paying for it 100%.
Theoretically, it's 50, 52%, something like that.
Yeah. That makes sense. Am I missing anything on that, on the ballot question? Is there anything else we should say?
No, you're right. If you're required, no, not just here in Kingston, no matter, they always make you do the full, in case things change. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. They always make you do the full amount in case things change, so that if it became that they only got to put in 49%, you don't have to keep going back to town meetings and things.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Before we get started, any other announcements from anyone?
Just thanking everyone for coming to special town meeting. All articles but one passed, so just appreciate everyone's time.
And we were able to start on time, unlike our regular annual town meeting.
Yeah, what was it, 10 articles in 90 minutes?
Yeah, it's very good. All right, before we get started, we do have open forum. If anybody would like to speak, just raise your hand. Go ahead.
Good evening, Sarah Lancing, 61 Hollins Lane, Veterans Agent for the Town. Next week is Veterans Day, on Tuesday, November 11th, and I just wanted to let everybody know that there is going to be a short ceremony out front at 10:30, open to all residents and the public. And then there's a luncheon over at the Council on Aging at 11, which is limited to veterans and seats only 100. We're almost maxed out on the RSVPs for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online with their hand up? I can't see.
No.
Okay. All right, moving on, our first appointment is a discussion of four-day work week continuing at the Townhouse. So back in February, our board approved a four-day work week for a six-month trial period from July 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2025, for the Townhouse. So we're meeting tonight to discuss continuing the current schedule beyond the December 31st, 2025. So again, in our handout here, we have the previous five-day schedule, where basically on Fridays, we were open from 8 to 11:30 PM. Back in July, we extended our normal hours, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 8 to 4:30 to 8 to 5 PM. And then on Tuesdays, it was 8 to 6 PM. Total hours worked are the same. We just haven't been open on Fridays. And just as one person speaking here, I haven't received any feedback, good or bad, from anybody. Well, I shouldn't say I haven't heard any good feedback. I mean, I've heard feedback that people like it, you know, people who are working totally get that. And just a reminder, Keith, when he presented this to the board, one of the issues was to help recruit and retain staff, you know, that this was a tool that would help us in our recruiting. And certainly, we're seeing that, you know, when we're talking to potential TA candidates as well. So, any discussion, any comments?
The only, the only question folks have come to me with is about posting agendas. So if we can figure out a way so that committees and boards can post agendas without needing to do that a day earlier, that would be great. So that was really the only feedback I heard. I know there is not really a cost savings, but I do know that folks who work in the building have expressed that they would like to keep it this way.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we started the discussion off with it, it's a great recruitment tool. My only thought, and it is, might be just my thought, is we're so close to hiring a new TA. Do we wait and give it another few months and have the new TA onboard to see how they appreciate that, or can oversee it and give us more insight? That's my only thought. I think it's great. I just wonder if we wait until we get someone. And I feel like we're making a decision without the person here that's going to oversee it. I don't know, just a thought.
As you all know, I wasn't here when the decision was made to have this trial period. And my general feeling is that I'm not enthusiastic about telling townsfolk that, you know, we need possibly a Proposition Two and a Half, we need more money, we need, we have budget problems, oh, and by the way, we're closed on Fridays. What I would be more in support of is, on an ongoing basis, I see it as reasonable to have the summer hours, so that perhaps for June, July, August, that it would always be this way. But my feeling is that I'm not in favor of it on an ongoing basis 12 months out of the year.
It's negotiated, right? Is this a negotiated conversation?
It was, I think it was a negotiated for the time, for the, for six months.
Six months, sundown.
Right.
Right.
For me personally, you know, I, the reason I was hesitant in the beginning was just worried about permits and other things, people coming in to do town business, but I literally have not had a, heard a single complaint about, about any of this.
No, I have not either.
The only other thing I would say is, as, you know, when I was working for the federal government, they had various work schedules that you could do, the five, four, nines, you'd do five, or four nine-hour days, and then a 10-hour day, and then you'd have every other Friday off kind of thing. And then they had the four tens, they had different work schedules for different people, and you had to get permission to do it. It wasn't, obviously, department-wide, it was up to the, up to your supervisor to do it. But it's certainly beneficial, I think, you know, it, the benefits that I see is it's cutting down on commuting. I mean, I don't think anybody has a super-long commute, but I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
But it's, it's an extra day that they would not have to come in. Three-day weekends are obviously worth a lot for work-life balance.
Yep.
The other thing is, a short day like that, I, I mean, I don't do all the jobs that people do here, but a lot of times, if it's, if it's a short day like this, for me, it'd be kind of a wasted day. For me, I need to kind of get up and going, and then I'm in full gear and keep going. So working a half-day is kind of, it's not as productive, I think. So you guys all bring up good points. I'm less worried about a TA, because I think a lot of towns are doing this.
Yeah.
Keith did not express any issues with this. He was more for it.
So the oversights from the department heads, then, more than?
Yeah, I think so.
Making sure that, what is it, 30-minute lunches, and is that how that, that played out, the 30-minute lunches?
Getting nods from the back of the room.
I know, I'm like, I can't remember the total conversation, but.
Ken, yeah, did you have something?
Ken Wiley, 111 Wapping Road, I am your current treasurer. And I just want to give you a perspective, so you haven't heard any complaints, but I can give you a real-world story about how the town has benefited from the four-day work week. When I first became treasurer, our assistant treasurer left to go to employ with the state, and I had to search for a new assistant treasurer. We had several applicants, and none were from the municipal space, and none had any experience in a treasury. Fast forward to the, we ended up hiring Nick, my former assistant collector. He worked out great, so well, that he went off to a bigger city and made twice as much money. So we had to hire another assistant treasurer. We had several qualified applicants from the finance world. We had five applicants from municipal, four of which were assistant treasurers, three of which said they loved the fact that we had a four-day work week, and said that the life, the work-life balance was the reason they applied.
Right.
We ended up with Crystal Rich, who is working out tremendously. She's a very bright person, she does a great job for us. So what Keith introduced to you that this would do, it's actually doing. And people want to come to Kingston. You'll see this in, in the TA's, you know, search. You'll see people want to come to Kingston. With due respect to my predecessor, Mr. Pike, the, there is no less productivity by not being here on Fridays. And I have to be honest, I do notice the morale on a Monday morning in this building is far better than it was prior to the four-day work week. So that's all I have to say, I just want to give you guys a different perspective. So thank you.
I did read something on, online somewhere that said that by 2030, we're supposed to be down to a 15-hour work week because of automation and AI, so.
Valerie's shaking her head.
Right. Val, did you, do you have your hand up?
I'm not sure we can offload the town planner job to AI, though. Valerie, you're, you're stuck.
Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity to first thank the Selectmen for doing the trial, but also to say, on behalf of all the Land Use Department heads, that we work together very well. Each and every one of us supports the three-day situation that we have. We, we all continue to work together very closely throughout the day, Monday through Thursday. It is a life-work balance that we appreciate, having the third day on the weekends. It is an attraction for us as we go through the hiring process. And it also allows us to, once we get the steam rolling, we have longer days during the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, to team up and work together, which I find really productive. I also find that some of us who do need to come in and work longer hours use the Friday for undisturbed time, whether or not we're being paid for it. And I, I think that we haven't had any situations with filings or conflicts in terms of trying to get paperwork through or serving the public, and I just wanted to advocate for the four-day work week. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Val.
That's a good point, is that, sorry, the hours that we see on this paper and that you see on the Townhouse doesn't, doesn't add the hours, like, right now, when we're in these meetings, in the evenings. So there are many of our staff members who are asked to be here in the evening as well, but we should just keep that in mind.
Yep.
Right.
I think, you know, I supported it when we first did it, I still support it. I think that, you know, we're, I support it in general, but also, we're competing against corporations that offer other benefits that are appealing, and these are the ways that towns can battle that, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions, or if not, then anyone want to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve changing the Townhouse hours to a four-day work week as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Opposed.
Yep. All right, four to one. All right, so that'll continue as of January 1. So do we need to go back and you need to negotiate that with the?
Has to be some sort of amendment at the.
Right, we have to update the M U.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. And thank you, everybody who spoke. It was helpful. All right, next item, our next appointment is a request from Eagle Scout Josh Peck to build a shed at the Kingston Intermediate School for Kingston Youth Soccer Association. So Josh, would you like to come up to the podium? Just state your name and your address, and then tell.
We don't have to read his application, though.
No, you can just give us a statement.
Joshua Peck, 40 Walter Fons Road. So I want to build a 10-by-10 shed on the soccer fields behind the intermediate school, benefiting the KYSA for my Eagle project.
Awesome. Yeah.
And did, it had approval from the school committee already, right? I did ask that, yeah. Okay. Want to tell everybody what would go in the shed, generally?
So I think they want to do some of the on-field equipment, like corner flags, the things that they used to paint the lines.
Yep.
And also, they hold, they help, they hold a summer camp over the summer, and they, like, give balls to all the kids, so that I could use the shed to store the balls for their summer camp.
Awesome.
I, that's great. I'm also an Eagle Scout, and I remember the biggest thing that I learned is, if you can motivate a bunch of kids to show up to work on your Eagle project and get the job done, any management job you ever have in your professional life later on down the road is going to be a whole lot easier. You'll get so much great experience, which you already have, you know, because you've, obviously, you're going for Eagle, so that's awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
So.
Just for clarity on the motion, you said KYSA, but we have KYSO, who's it for?
KY.
It's KYSA, because KYSO is at.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
KYSA is separate.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to.
I did ask that question, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll want to amend that.
Yep.
All right, any questions or?
In terms of ongoing maintenance, so once the project is built, this is something we talk about a lot with different projects throughout town, like, there's a gazebo out front that was a Boy Scout project at one point, I think the one out front was a Boy Scout project. Who, once you've built it, and like, five years down the line, is responsible for maintenance for this?
The beneficiary, KYSA said that they would maintain it.
Okay. I, I know it's in your paperwork, I just, it's good to ask these questions, too, because in the future, people will wonder, and, yeah. And it's, it's good practice, anyway, right? For you, to speak in front of all of us.
Just what he wants to do. He did great. Thank you.
Any other questions for him, or a motion?
Great job. What is the shed going to be made of, is the question?
Oh, yeah. Just standard wood, plywood?
Construction materials.
So wood and roofing and?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing crazy. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request from Josh Peck to build a shed at the KIS property for KYSA to use as storage.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Nice job.
When will you be doing it?
I'm hoping to start as soon as possible. So it should be done, well, it has to be done before February 3rd.
Has to be done before February 3rd, okay. Is that your 18th birthday, is that why?
Selfishly, I ask, because my oldest is in Boy Scouts, so I'm like, wait, when am I putting this project on our calendar?
Got it.
Good.
Great.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
Awesome, yeah, congrats.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, next item is approval of multiple one-day liquor licenses for 42nd Brew Company and WM Brewing Company. So we have all of the information in our packet. Does, I'm not going to read all the dates.
You might want to, because it's in the motion.
Okay, so Gears and Beers, November 15th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at 26 Wapping Road. Then Weir's Tree Farm, 57 Pembroke Street, November 28th, 2025, from 10:00 to 4:00. November 29th, from 10:00 to 4:00. November 30th, 10:00 to 4:00. December 6th, from 10:00 to 4:00. And December 7th, from 10:00 to 4:00. And then WM Brewing is requesting a one-day license for Plymouth Punk Rock Christmas Market at Kingston Collection, 101 Kingston Collection Way, November 30th, from 12:00 to 5:00 PM.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the one-day liquor license requests for 42nd Brew Company and WM Brewing Company as stated above.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. That's unanimous. All right, next item, approval to appoint two full-time police officers from the Civil Service Local Register. Lieutenant Bateman is going to come up and probably speak not quite as long as our chief.
He's right there.
I know he is.
I feel like an overwhelming person.
Babysitter is there.
So, long story short, the board's already approved, one position was hired from the Civil Service regular list, and, long story short, Civil Service has allowed this local register to hire, have our own list opposed to the state list.
Yep.
And we put that list out for the state list that you guys approved, and no one signed it. So we're trying to leverage this local register, trying to get people that are already police officers, hopefully, and speed up the process and get people on the road. And that would kind of cut down on some overtime costs right now, which would be great. Kind of a bigger question going forward, these are not new positions, but going forward, with this new list, since we haven't had this list before, or this kind of thing, I don't know, just your thoughts going forward, it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but if they keep on doing the local register and the Civil Service list, it might be something where we just ask for, to hire or offer either one, and where we kind of management decision go for, so.
Based on the best candidate and the needs at the time?
Well, yeah, at the end of the five years, you're supposed to have a 50/50.
Yeah.
Who knows after five years where Civil Service is going to be, where we're going to be as a town, and things of that nature, so, I mean, year one, to be honest with you, I'm not really that concerned about it. In five years, I'm sure there'll be enough retirements where they can hire off the list. But just to kind of reiterate, when we hire off the regular service list, it's about a year process, and since we've been coming to you and asking for new hires, we've had two, two individuals, I'm going to have to be up there again probably in the next meeting, too, that did not meet the requirements of, of the conditions of the hires, and so that was a year ago. So we've been waiting for new bodies to be on the road for a year, and we don't have any, so.
All right, any questions, comments, or a motion?
The, these two bodies.
Yes, sir.
Are not, neither one of them is a replacement for the person who we took the money from to, in favor of the sergeant.
Ah, no, no. So right now, these two people, one person off this local register is a, is a position that we've been trying to fill, fill. We put it out to the Civil Service, no one signed it. Basically, it takes, you know, it's another two to a half a month, you know, two weeks to a half a month. And the other position, we have another officer retiring in December, so trying to jumpstart that, because these are people off the road, and so we're backfilling them over, on overtime. So we're kind of in a quandrum of trying to get people on the road, so we're not having,
right.
Basically, we have three open shifts every week, every, every week, three people that we're backfilling overtime for, on top of court time, any other trainings, stuff like that. So these are all not new positions, and we, we still have open positions after this, so.
Okay.
So anything that would happen in the future with budgets, in the budget season, which is excellent, I've taken some budget classes, and it's riveting, you know, there is, you know, we're taking, you know, those things into account, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the Police Chief to appoint, on behalf of the board, two full-time police officer appointments from the Civil Service Local Register, and to provide an introduction of the candidates to the board prior to the candidates beginning employment.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right, on to additional items.
Recording in progress.
We have a donation from the Council on Aging.
Did you skip the?
It says it won't be discussed.
Oh, missed that part. Sorry, I was all prepared.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion on the Council on Aging donation?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept a donation of $50 to the Kingston Council on Aging from John and Catherine Coco.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. All right, appointment to the Cultural Council, Diane Fay, Susan Sherman, and Christine Mariano are the candidates. They have five vacancies, so we need to make, we need to appoint these people. Any questions, comments?
The minimum that they can, they need to be able to actually use the funds allocated to them is five, correct?
Yeah, that was my understanding. That's, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. I can make a motion if everyone's good.
Go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Diane Fay, Susan Sherman, and Christine Mariano to the Cultural Council, effectively, effective immediately through June 30th of 2028.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All righty. Now, next item is acceptance of resignation of the ADA Coordinator and appointment of ADA Coordinator Patricia Tucker. So we have the resignation of Paul Armstrong, effective October 31st, 2025. And the appointment of an ADA Coordinator has been placed in the job description of the Building Inspector that we're trying to fill. But since the position's vacant, we need to appoint someone.
Should this appointment be interim, or does it not matter? You'll just resign from it once the Building Commissioner gets hired? Okay.
She thinks she'll resign.
Maybe she wants to keep it. Maybe she applied to be Building Commissioner, I don't know.
So we have, we have to do two motions.
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Paul Armstrong as the ADA Coordinator, effective October 31st, 2025.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Patricia Tucker as ADA Coordinator, effective immediately.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you, Tricia.
Thanks for doing that. One more thing.
Appointment of election officers. So per Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 12, the Board of Selectmen must appoint election officers once a year. So the list, we do have that attached, we've got the list of names somewhere. What's that? No, I don't think we have to read them all.
No, it is on the agenda, though, that is posted on the website, so.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint the attached list of election officers, effective immediately through August 2026.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. The next item, we have no update. I did, while, while I will say, I circulated the MOU just internally, not out to Water and Sewer yet.
Okay.
So we'll be doing that. So we will then need to put the hiring, or moving forward with hiring a superintendent after we get that memo, memorandum out to everybody. after we get that memo, memorandum out to everybody.
Can I, what is the timing, you think, on that?
The memorandum?
Yeah, yeah.
And then the hiring, like, how, what, what do you think that?
I don't know, how long does it take to post and?
Highway superintendent.
Highway, yeah, the.
It has to be posted at least for 10 days.
Yeah. So I, I think arguably, I mean, we'll, we'll need to talk to Tina about this, um, probably offline, but if, if we aim for, you know, having the, you know, a person in place by January 1, I don't know if that's, uh, reasonable. I know, um, we want to have some movement on the MOU before doing this, so.
Yeah. I think all parties involved are interested in that, so it'll move pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think so too.
So it just needs to go before, like, yeah.
Water and sewer.
Okay, okay.
I like that, and I mean, at least it gets somebody.
So would you just request this be on their agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sorry.
No, it's all right. Uh, next item, meeting minutes.
I move the board of selectmen approve the open session meeting minutes for October 7th, 2025 and October 21st, 2025 as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, Josh, this is not a normal meeting. This, we're, we moved through in about a half an hour. These are usually two, three hours long, so you came to the right one.
Yeah.
And you were at the beginning anyway, so that was good.
You were expected to leave the whole time.
Right. Well, eventually they would, if it was a regular meeting after an hour, you'd probably be like, we'll try to get out of here.
There you go.
Right. Um, is there a town administrator report, anything you want to update us on?
This is the time I actually put the, the machine on here. The one thing that Tina and I have been working on, uh, it's been, uh, no, no, you can, I mean, it's all right, it, it's all right to go. I mentioned to you about the, um, the, the, the building inspector. And we currently had, our, we, in fact, just as I got back from the doctor's office this afternoon, it looked like those two contracts may have come in.
Yeah.
So we're a step further than we were, uh, the week before. Uh, we've kind of jokingly called this, this is like a Frankenstein experiment. If we can sew enough bodies together, we'll have a huge, uh, one, one person, so we're getting.
Part-time interim.
Yes, we're trying to get them, you know, for the 90 days that we've, that we've got in, you know, 90 or 120.
Right.
And if there's, if everything works in your favor, um, uh, maybe, maybe you might have somebody within three weeks, four weeks. I, I don't know, you know, but, but let's try to get a 90 day breathing period so that you'll have something. And, and hopefully, maybe a, a week and a half or so, or two weeks, we're, we're going to try to get everybody together to, to do it. And, and of course, we will run this by you. I mean, we're not, we're not just going to, you know, do it on our own. We'll, we'll, we'll run it by you guys can approve it. And, but so far, it has been done by the labor council.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not like we're just flying by the seat of our pants here. And, um, beyond that, I, we've been, I've been trying to, behind the scenes, because I don't know how long before you'll have somebody to cobble together a bit of a budget and, and, and try to put as much as, as I can together and, uh, and, you know, it's coming along. And I, I mentioned maybe to a couple of the members that, you know, maybe we can meet on a, on a night before the, the, uh, the, uh, town, the selectments meeting here or whatever, and, and maybe have like a, a coalition of, you know, somebody from the finance, somebody from the, the, um, selectmen and try to keep everybody informed where we are. And if I'm done in five weeks, two weeks, whatever it is, we'll just leave, hey, this is what I've got. Leave it on a stick and the next person can have it. They can throw it away or, or, you know, but it'll be better than nothing, you know, I mean, instead of just like, I'm just coming in, you know, in a cold run, you know? So that, that's about it at the moment.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, any, any comments from selectmen?
My only comment, I read the interesting way that Duxbury is going forward already with their override requests for FY '27. Um, they've got two or three different alternatives explaining what will happen for A, D, and C. So, uh, you know, I think that's kind of a, a, a good, you know, thing to look at and think about that if in fact we have to go in that direction, there's a, a pilot there, so to speak. Yes.
If it, if it means anything, we had a discussion this morning in the, and I think what we did come to as a thing is, is rather than, than coming up with, hey, this is what the department does, we, 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 everybody's preparing an impact statement.
Yeah.
So, okay, if I don't get the money, this is what's going to happen. Department acts, I lose two people, I can't do this anymore.
Right.
And at least to be prepared for it. Again, you might not need it, but, um, I don't know, the, the numbers aren't right, right now, I don't think, so, you know, I mean.
And we all know that it all depends upon the schools. That i- if the schools come in at three, three and a half percent, then by God, I will be looking to see, say that we don't need a two and a half override. If the schools come in at seven percent, we got a problem.
Okay.
Any other comments? So our next regular meeting is November 18th. Reminder, we, there is going to be a ceremony here on the, the 11th.
Veterans Day?
Yes.
10:30 AM.
Thank you. And then the 15th, that Saturday, we've got the special election, the ballot election. So we have a lot of stuff coming up.
And that is to, uh, fund the partial roof repair on the roof at the elementary school. So just keep that in mind. It is leaking, so.
Right, actively, and it has for years.
Right.
Right. All right.
We, we should probably get at least 100 people interested in voting on the separate.
Out of 10,000, you mean?
Separate election day.
Out of 10,000 people, we're going to get up 100 people, ugh.
What's the minimum?
One, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a minimum vote for that. There's no, yeah, whoever shows up.
All right. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn at 6:35.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye.
How about just aye?
Just ayes. I'm not used to us all being here.
All right, 5:00.